Do we have a floor? Do we have a floor?
We have a floor. What you doing to him?
I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilman Lee? Here, Councilwoman Fox?
Here. Here. Present. 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 Is your motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting? So moved?
Second.
Motion made in second. The clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, this time I would ask everybody to turn off your cell phones. And please join me in a moment of silence in memory of the tragedy that happened in Boston. It affects all of us. And we have our deepest sympathy to everybody who was hurt and injured during that fiasco. Thank you. Please stand and join me in the federal allegiance. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under public acknowledgements, I call Councilman Botts to present the certificates of the Eagle Scouts, please.
Thank you, Council President. It's an honor to acknowledge the nine gentlemen here tonight that achieved the rank of Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts of America. All are from the same troop here in Cranston. One Eagle happens to be my second cousin. Three other Eagles I know through their involvement with the Little League. And I attended high school with the father of one other in Warwick, but we'll keep that a secret. Every now and then through Facebook, I can see the photos of their camping trips and other outings they're involved with. They seem to be a very close-knit group, very involved in scouting. And again, it is a great honor to acknowledge their achieving the highest rank bestowed upon a Boy Scout, the rank of Eagle. Congratulations. And if we can have the Eagle Scouts come up to the front, we can present you with citations from the City Council.
Congratulations, gentlemen, and job well done. I now call on Councilman Richard San Maria.
Thank you, Council President. It is again an honor to recognize two teams from St. Mary's Church. First, St. Mary's Boys Midget Basketball Team, who just happened to go undefeated. They captured the D2 State Championship defeating St. Philomena on March 10th at St. Mayfield's Academy and finished the season with an impressive undefeated 15-0 record. This is the first Boys' Midget Title in school history and the school's first basketball title of any kind since '03-'04. Council President, not only that, the coach told me they were all doing very well academically, so I think that's a doubleheader as far as I'm concerned, well academically and undefeated in athletics.
Well, my son attended St. Mary's School, so I expect nothing less than academic and athletic achievement.
So I thought I'd throw that in there to cover them, you know what I'm saying? Okay, Coach Missoula, you want to come up and you can use the microphone? And Councilman Osito wanted to give out one citation, so Councilman Osito, you want to come on up?
Let's get to the coaches. Now, we'll do it with the players. Andrew Piccolo. Matthew Petranti. Diego Hamilton. Brian Bultina. Michael. Michael Marisi. Congratulations. Congratulations. Mr. Piccolo. Nathan Maywood. Okay, Thomas Scorpione. Jeremy Missoula.
Okay, guys, you can stay up here, and I want to also introduce the St. Mary's School Basketball Second Place. They came in second place in the CAAL Grandma Finals. So, Coach, again, this is for the second-place team. No, I gave him to Mike Palatano, you going to call him or? Just read him. You want me to read?
Xavier Demigus.
Antonio Montremello.
Peter Recki.
Jared Missoula.
Ladies and gentlemen, the St. Mary's Boys' Midget Basketball Undefeated Team and St. Mary's Schools Basketball Second Place Finisher, let's have a great round of applause. Thank you, Council President.
Council President? Chair, Councilman Kettle.
Thank you, Council President. Having introduction, to my right I have a constituent, Mr. Paul Marino, who will be assisting me on this new technology we have here this evening. Okay, if anybody else needs Mr. Marino, I'm sure he'll be available.
All right, we will now start the public hearing section. Council President? Yes?
And I hate to hand out the citations to the Eagle Scouts, I didn't read their names out loud, but would you mind if I read them for the record?
All right, before we start the public hearing, please.
Thank you, Council President. The nine Eagle Scouts that were presented citations tonight were Richard DC, Luke Sacocchio, Alex Knight, Matthew Chivers, Nicholas DeLuca, Axel Halverson, Joseph Forge, Gabriel Dantonio, and Curtis Agradic. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. All right, now we will have the public hearing section of this meeting. On the sign-up sheet, I have Susan Blake. Susan, would you like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of residents who live in the nearby neighborhood. I'm here to talk about the problem with rats. It was a huge problem last year, as you all know, and we made a concerted effort through the city to control and abate the situation. However, they are abundant once again, and I've already spoken with Minimum Housing Inspector, Mr. Holtz, he's come over and taken a look, but I just am concerned that the summer is upon us within a few weeks, and I don't want it to become another blossoming situation out of control. There's a lot of little kids in the neighborhood. I live on Richard Street, two blocks from here, and in the four households that I can scream loud enough that they can hear me, there's eight school-aged children, four dogs that go outside, three cats, and if you multiply that by the number of households in the area, it's just, it's exponentially catastrophic if it goes uncapped at this point. So I just wanted to know, is there a plan in place to take care of this? Because it's upon us once again, and I don't want it to go until July or August before the city comes in and blankets the area, because then we've lost a summer of cooking out and, you know, playing with our kids out after dark and whatnot. So that's why I'm here.
Would anybody from the administration like to try to answer? This is Blake's question.
Thank you, Council President, for the opportunity. Mrs. Blake, if you would be so kind, feel free to contact our mayor's office tomorrow morning, ask for Marissa Campasani, and we certainly can check into your situation. But I do want you to be aware that throughout our budget hearings and throughout regular communication with this council, we have briefed them on the plans for, you know, trying to get ahead of the rat situation. And we are currently training additional personnel to be able to administer the rat poisoning and do follow-up and checkups on that. So I think what you'll see in this upcoming season of the rat season, you'll see more enforcement, more activity with the rats. So please contact us tomorrow, or if we go in tonight, just go on the Cranston website, look for Marissa, she's the constituent affairs person, and she'll get right on top of it. We'll go out there and we'll do whatever we have to do to help your situation and your neighbors.
So much. I appreciate it.
Of course, no matter what time, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak on any docketed item? Tony, do you have your microphone on?
Turn the green light.
You don't want me to repeat that, do you?
No. I was going to tell you to keep the microphone off, but.
I'm not going to touch that, Richard. Council President, council members, what happens with this resolution is between the administration and the council. I just wanted to give my views on this, of council people calling city department heads, directors. I think when this is discussed, timeframe should be concerned, 7:00 to 5:00 p.m., if that's what you're looking at. I'm doing a talk about the present in the past. I have gotten phone calls from council people at 9:30 at night because people complain there are dogs on the ball field. I have gotten calls at 10:30 at night, want to know why I don't have no smoking signs at Little League fields. I've had calls 9:30, 9 o'clock, informing me that there's someone they'd like to work in a playground program. Mind you, with all this, you weren't supposed to be calling me. Calling the administration first, but permission to call. If this moves forward, I would like the cellphone number and the home phone number of each council person, so when you do call me, I can identify who's calling. My phone has to be on 24 hours a day, because I've got buildings that are alarmed and I have to respond. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public who would like to speak on any docketed item? Okay, public hearing section is now closed. There were no docketed resolutions this evening. Report of committees, audience committee, I now call on Councilman Pacchetto.
Thank you, Council President. We had one resolution passed through the audience committee. I believe it was a four, three, four yeas, affirmative, three noes, and a negative, encouraging the General Assembly to eliminate single-party voting by means of single mark on the ballot. Entertainer motion.
Motion to pass? Second. Motions were made in second, under discussion. Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. Again, I was a sponsor of this resolution. I feel as though we should be encouraging the General Assembly to eliminate voting by means of a single mark or the master lever, as Colin calls a master lever. I do feel as though it disenfranchises voters again, elections that are lower on the ballot, such as school committee, which are nonpartisan races, people mark a single line on there to vote for a particular party and don't look further down the ballot for other races in referendum that they might be voting for. So, in my opinion, it's something that is left over from the days of the mechanical machines and is not a necessary item anymore. So I urge the council to pass the resolution, and thank you.
Councilman Farina?
The reason I was a no on this in committee, and I want to be no again, is because we've already passed a resolution to the General Assembly, where they're going to put a referendum on the ballot to eliminate single-party voting. I don't think we need two resolutions that talk about eliminating single-party voting. This council, in its wisdom, has already concluded that a referendum makes sense with single-party voting to eliminate it, so I don't see why we need another resolution to basically say the same thing, just a different way.
Councilman Recki?
Thank you, Council President. I co-sponsored this with Councilman Botts, so obviously I supported it. I'm glad to see that some of our colleagues have apparently changed their mind because it came out of committee this time. I think it makes an awful lot of sense. I think even the independent candidate, Ken Block, mentioned that it affected how people approached even the independent candidates. So I think it's definitely something whose time has come, and I think I'm glad to see that we'll at least come out in support of it. It looks like it will be coming off, and I think it's a good thing. So I urge everyone to vote for it.
Councilman San Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Question for the sponsor? Question to the Councilman Botts? Yes, please. Last I heard, both the Senate and House committees held this for further study. Is there any further meetings coming up?
As you know, the General Assembly, the Speaker could choose at any time to bring that back out of being held for study and have up or down vote in committee. So this resolution would be urging the General Assembly for passage, and hopefully that could change his mind.
All right, we're sending up a resolution that may not be heard, because obviously they've already sent up a few when they decided to hold it for further study. So are we sending this resolution up for them to hold for further study, or are we sending it up because they might be hearing it again?
You never know, it could be heard again. You just never know, do you? It's there, Alpha Study, if the Speaker chooses to take it out.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll make a quick comment. I voted against this in committee, and I'll vote against it tonight. We already have a resolution asking for a referendum. A referendum involves the entire population to vote on a subject like this, because it affects everybody. By sending it just to the General Assembly, and we all know what happens at the General Assembly, things get buried in committee, and they never come out of committee. At least this way, the general public, every voter on the island would have a chance to vote on something like this. That's the way it should be. No further discussion. The clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stiegos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kettle?
Yes.
Councilwoman Osito?
No.
Councilwoman Vito?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vercola?
No.
Councilman Lee?
No. Motion passes. Next on the docket, Council President, is a resolution that, I'm not sure what the outcome was in the audience committee on this, if it come to the floor. Resolution, the City Council supports clarifying the right of City Council members to form constituent concerns, complaints, and requests for information to city department heads. Motion to approve? Motion was made, is there a second? Motion is made in a second, under discussion. Councilman Kettle?
Thank you, President. I introduced this resolution, and this is only a resolution, doesn't mandate anything that's a request that the city can comply with or the city may not. Due to the fact that there are times that the administration is overwhelmed with issues and with concerns, and it takes hours, sometimes days, in order to contact the necessary individuals to expedite matters. So if this resolution passes, it will cut this red tape, it will streamline government and make the citizens more happy, I think, with government. Also, if we don't pass this, we're not going to send a message to the powers that be that if you look at the Charter and the punishment for violating this, if we give a department head directive or call a department head, it's a draconian punishment, it's a removal from government. I checked with the United States Congress, I checked with the General Assembly, any violation to the realm of that meaning, basically the punishment is censured by the body. So I don't understand why the Charter talks about removal. And I know that in the history of Cranston, Cranston past, we had some mayors that were very, very autocratic. And if Cranston wants to continue down that road with having an autocratic executive and minus legislative branch, we can let the executive do as he chooses. But the reason why I'm trying to pass this is to safeguard ourselves from that draconian punishment that's in the Charter. And that's my reasoning.
Councilman Stiegos?
In light of Mr. Liberatore's comments, I'd like to offer an amendment that at the line 37, after the word "city," that we add the words "during work hours."
I'll second that. I'll second that amendment.
Yeah, I just, I think it's pretty outrageous to call someone at home late at night a department director unless it's an absolute emergency. So I think that Tony made his point well, and we ought to modify the resolution to reflect that.
All right, amendment has been made.
Council President, if you want to speak on the actual ordinance, wait after this, wait until.
All right, let's continue with the original ordinance first, our resolution first, and then we'll consider the amendments. The amendment's before us. The amendment's before us. All right, please, I checked with our legal counsel. The amendment's before us, we have to vote on the amendment. Right. There was a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stiegos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox?
Yes.
Councilwoman Osito?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vercola?
Yes. Councilman San Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I agree with my colleague that it may be draconian, the punishment, but it's in there. We are sworn, we swear on a Bible to uphold the Charter, and whether it's draconian or not, it clearly states non-interference with another, with the administration. Like it or not, that's the way it is, you know, and I just feel that if we were to go down that road, we could, you know, possibly lose our seats. So, and I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to do that, so I will be supporting this, thank you.
Councilman Osito?
Thank you, Mr. President. I talked about this in committee a little bit when it came before us. I really, as a council member, don't see any harm if I have a question or need information or something to go through a department head. I know what the Charter says. I can't direct a department head to do anything, because I could be impeached. I can't tell them how to do something, because I could be impeached. But in this day and age, to send a department head an email and just ask for information, I really don't see any harm in it. And I think it's practical, you know, with our schedules, because we're only part-time legislators, we're not here 24/7 like some of the department heads are. Just for the record, Tony, it wasn't me who left any messages on your phone. It wasn't me who left any messages on your phone. I usually text you directly. But anyways, all kidding aside, I really think from a communication standpoint in this day and age, I know that if I need to get something done... this day and age, I know that if I need to get something done, you know, I have to work through the administration and constituent affairs. But on the other hand, if I just have a quick question or something, I really don't see the harm in being able to pick up the phone and talk to that person. And nine times out of 10, they're going to say, "Well, you have to do this with the mayor's office anyway." And that's fine. But, I'm voting, and I'm supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Council Vice President Farina.
I do respect the intent of this resolution. I think we should be able to call our directors if we have questions, and I think I do that now. I don't think any director has ever said they won't answer my question. The issue I have with this, it creates a slippery slope that I don't really want, as a councilman, ever fall down, where someone's question could be construed as an order or a command. I mean, people can perceive things different ways, and if you're having a conversation with a director, and they feel that you're commanding them, you could fall down a slope where you're actually telling them to do something, and you had no intention to do so. Like Councilman Santa Maria, I'm not going to risk losing a seat that I felt really hard to get, and I think it just creates that open door where we could basically fall down a hole that I'm not willing to do. So, I'm going to be voting against this.
Councilman Bott.
Thank you, Council President. My short time here on the council, I've sent a few emails to directors, and, you know, got timely responses back to my questions. And my concern is with this resolution, in trying to, I guess, codify access to these directors, is that we're just moving in a different direction, where they're going to put the clamps down now, and it has to go through constituent affairs. And in turn, we're losing that unofficial access that I think we all have. So, in view of that, and the other arguments presented tonight, I really don't want to support the resolution. Thank you.
Councilman Fletchio.
Thank you, Council President. Along with Councilman Bott, I understand the need for some clarification on how we go about addressing issues like the rat problem, or some other complaints that our constituents make. I certainly think that clarifying those lines of communication might help, and I understand the sponsors' frustrations at times. But we also heard Mr. Libroturi tell us how crazy that could get. And the other thing is, we've had, I believe, our solicitor mention that we really would be going down a slippery slope with regard to exceeding our authority. The directors do not work for us. They work for the administration. And it could be pretty, the line between an order and just obtaining information could be blurred. I think what we do now, for the most part, is relay information to them, and ask them for information, but we're not asking them, or telling them, to go do something, take care of this problem, or we usually try to get the administration involved. So, for those reasons, I think we need to stay away from anything that requiring the directors to answer to us directly. I think we need to maybe figure out how to streamline our communication with the administration, but I don't, I can't support this resolution at this point.
Councilman Kettle.
Thank you, Council President. I just like to correct my colleague. The directors work for the taxpayers of the City of Cranston. Both cities' employees do. We do, the mayor does. So, that's where we see a bit of a difference. I, as I said, we need to make inroads, in fact, to make the City Council more effective, more responsive. If all of us end up calling Carlos every day, which we do, with two or three concerns, I mean, you could imagine how Mr. Lopez would be backlogged with all those requests. This measure is a measure to streamline government and cut the red tape. Also, as a safeguard against the Charter, I think the Charter is too oppressive. I think that needs to be looked at. A councilperson should not be removed from his position trying to get something done for a constituent. And I think that's terrible.
Would the administration like to respond to?
I spoke at this at the subcommittee meeting, as referenced by Council Vice President Farina and Councilman Santa Maria. I think it does present a slippery slope with respect to whether or not the person receiving the communication sees that as an ask for information or an ask to get something done. Clearly, there's a difference between the two. The administration has, is charged with looking at the city as an entire city and moving it forward in the direction with the monies that you allocate towards it. That's my biggest disagreement with Councilman Kettle's position in this, is that we should be able to tell the city directors what to do for our constituents. And that, quite frankly, is not the role of the legislature, and I think it fringes upon various separation of powers issues whereby the administration does govern and administer the priorities of the city. You allocate the monies. You don't tell people when to do what you want people to do for your constituents. I think that's a misreading of the Charter. I don't think any Charter provides for that. I don't think any congressional format provides for that. I don't think any state provides for that. Calling for information, I see, has to be done in an orderly manner. Your priorities are certainly not the priorities of the city as a whole. And that's the beauty of the system, is that the mayor is charged with looking at the city as a whole, and the priorities of a whole may not be a stop sign or a speed bump on this street or that street. So, we take them in order of priority, and we're sorry that your priorities may not be our priorities, but that's the way the system is designed.
Mr. Lopez, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Council President. I too have previously addressed this issue in front of the subcommittee, and I do wish to reiterate the position that we have, that to go down this road is not advisable. And the old saying goes that the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Well, this is one of those good intentions. And I think, while it's admirable that Councilman Kettle was a fierce fighter for his ward, I do think that the administration as a whole is very responsive to most of the needs of the council. I can't think of a single thing within reason that the council has asked for, that the administration hasn't provided, or given access to, or responded in a way that was satisfying to the councilperson, and to the constituent as a whole. To go down this road would also, as one of the councilpeople said, codify something that is inherent in the relationship that we have as an executive branch, in the legislative branch, in the separation of powers. We enjoy a great working relationship with all of you, and, as I said, we are very responsive to your needs and to your constituents. And, quite frankly, I don't feel that there's a need to codify this, put it in a resolution, even though a resolution, it has no weight. It's the principle of it, it's the appearance of it, and it's the spirit in which it's brought forth that's troubling. And I strongly urge the City Council, in its wisdom, to reject the resolution, and let us continue with a good working relationship that we have with each other. Thank you.
Councilman Stykos. Did you have your hand up early? I missed you.
I did, but I just, I was going to ask what you asked to hear from the administration.
Oh, okay. Anybody else? Councilman Seo.
What's troubling to me is, I thought we lived in a democracy. And in a democracy, everybody has the right to ask questions and think what they want. Again, I think we're taking this too far. Nowhere in this resolution are we directing any Department Head to do something. Okay? I really don't think we're directing anybody to do something. If our constituents have a question, and I don't have the answer, and I need to get back to them right away, I really don't see the hurt in asking a question. Now, I understand the difference between asking a question and directing a director to do something. I think everybody on this council, and everybody in this ordinance, understands that. So, you know, I know we're going to go back and forth, and I know we're going to use cliches like slippery slope and everything else, but we live in a democracy, and in a democracy, we have the right to ask questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
I want to tell you why, a brief example, Council President, if I can, why all questions are not created equal. You are the governing body in terms of allocating money for the budget in the city. When you call a Department Head for question, I guarantee that that Department Head feels that if your question has to go to the top, either rightly or wrongly, because of the power that you yield. And that improperly puts a greater emphasis, and makes you a superconstituent, not any constituent. And that's the problem.
Mr. President, may I address the?
Yes, please, Councilman.
I disagree with you. There is a public budget process that we are currently going through. Once that public budget process is done, it's done. That's the budget for the year. The mayor proposes it, we look at it, we allocate what we think is right. If we agree with the mayor, we vote for the budget, up or down. Then, after that, I don't see how I'm going to be a superconstituent and take monies from one department and give them to another.
Because there's always extra's budget. There's always the extra person that somebody wants in their department, and there's always a power to it.
That's irrelevant.
That is not irrelevant. Absolutely not.
It's irrelevant.
Absolutely not. Also, may I remind the council that you have particular powers conferred onto you on the Charter, ways in which you can get information, separate and apart from side conversations with directors, which takes them off the work that they are doing for the administration, and reprioritizes it towards the superconstituent model that I say.
Anybody else under discussion? I'll throw in my two cents, if you don't mind. Number one, I honestly believe that this resolution violates the Charter. The Charter doesn't say, and the difference between a request and an order is a very If we're going to do something like this, you do a Charter change first. You put it out for referendum, change the Charter. If the majority of constituents feel that way, they would vote yes. Once you change the Charter, then you can do this. Until that time, you're in violation of the Charter. And I am not going to violate a Charter that I swore and oath to uphold. Clerk, please take the roll. Councilman Kettle, one more time.
I just want to draw this. I got my message to the general public, saying, you know, you have.
Oh.
With the. Reminisce and within certain rules and regulations. I think the message was brought to the attention of the City of Cranston. I'm not going to require my colleagues to vote on something that may violate the Charter.
Councilman Kettle, you brought this to our attention, went through committee, here before us tonight, after a half-hour discussion. Now you're going to withdraw this. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee.
No.
Councilwoman Stychos.
No.
Councilman Bott.
No.
Councilman Kettle.
Yes.
Councilman Seo.
Yes.
Councilman Simeon.
No.
Councilman Vito.
No.
Councilman Rafflina.
No.
Councilman Lee.
No.
Now, we move on to the Finance Committee. I call on Councilman Stykos for a committee report.
The first item is an ordinance regarding the collection of past due taxes, and this was passed, I believe unanimously in committee, with the, that's Councilman Seo's ordinance, I believe with the change that it would be an option, a tool that the administration could use if it so chose. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I would, I guess, kind of, yeah, I'd move passage of this.
Second.
Motion made in second. Under discussion. Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Seo, could I have a brief synopsis, I wasn't at the committee meeting, what this actually does, just bullet points is fine.
I believe the way that the Director of Finance has written it is when we send the tax notices out to the citizens, it'll tell them a message someplace that we have the ability to, I defer to the Finance Director, I guess, he's there, he knows it better than I do. Yes.
Yeah. Councilman Santa Maria, what we decided to do, there is legislation that allows you to hold income tax from an individual that owes real estate taxes, property taxes, motor vehicle taxes, et cetera. What we decided to do, based on my discussion with the Tax Collection Department and my Treasurer, we want to put a paragraph in a Dunning notice, or possibly on a tax bill that says, "Please be advised, the City of Cranston, in accordance with the state tax refund offset program, requires that all taxes be paid on before the due dates. The link on taxes taken from previous years must also be paid in full. Failure to pay taxes may delay or may lead to withholding of the available state income tax." So, we just find that it would be another method of collecting taxes, hopefully, on a more common basis.
Thank you, Director Strom. Councilman Seo.
If I may follow up on that, and I guess both Director Strom and myself have had conversations with the Finance Director in East Providence, which was in test for this. When I questioned him on, I guess the newspaper stated that they received $1.2 million in collections. Was it a fact that they actually, you know, called him or collected him, or was it just a fact that they got the letter? And I think he agreed it was the fact that they got a letter, and that they knew about the program, that kind of pushed people over the fence a little bit, and made them diligent in paying back taxes. So, I know we have an excellent collection rate in the city, but if we get that difference of wherever we are, .98 or .99 to the difference, it's new found money, and any new found money is just a boon to the city and to the taxpayers, so that we don't have to further raise any more taxes. I'm voting for this, and I hope my colleagues will support me on this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? There are none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Lee. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Stykos.
The next ordinance is an ordinance verifying the Laborers International Union contract negotiated by the mayor. This was approved in the Finance Committee on a, I believe it was five to two vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Under discussion. Councilman Kettle.
Thank you, President. I just want to commend the laborers and the mayor for passing a very fair contract. I know that when Cranston hit hard times a few years back in my first term, the laborers gave up a portion of their contract for a half a million dollars. This contract also increases co-pay for health care. Laborers are working short-handed, there's many positions that haven't been filled in their lines. So, I think they do not stand a job, especially during hurricanes and storms, and we need to pass this contract.
I call on Mr. Corley from the administration before we continue to make a quick statement.
Thank you, Council President. While council conducts the necessary vetting process of this proposed three-year contract between the city and Luna, I would encourage you to consider the following. First of all, Luna leadership and rank-and-file membership has willingly made concessions in the past to help the city through some very trying financial problems. This new proposal before you this evening also includes concessions that will continue to help the city manage its financial responsibilities going forward. Not the least of these new concessions is their agreement to a defined contribution 401K-style pension plan for all new employees, just as the Teamsters did before them. This concession will produce long-term, ongoing financial benefits to the City of Cranston. Finance Director Strom is available to address any of the financial questions you may have. I'm available tonight to address any of the management rights questions you may have this evening. this evening in regards to this tentative agreement. In the end, the administration urges your approval of this proposed agreement. Thank you.
Council Vice President Farina?
I said this in the committee meeting, and I'm going to say it again. The laborers are one of the first bargaining units to step up and give back concessions when the city needs them. I know if the city was to hit tough financial times again, and we needed concessions to help get us back on track, the laborers would step up again. They forego the 5.9% raise three years ago. All new employees run a 401K-style system, which will save us tens of thousands of dollars in the long term. So I think this is a fair deal, which benefits all parties involved. I thank the laborers for all the work they do, and I'm going to be supporting this.
Councilman Stychos?
I'll be voting against this contract. The reason is that this is a decision to increase our costs in the Public Works Department by $400,000 a year. And so the question to me is, is this the way that I want to spend another $400,000? And the answer to that is, no. I would rather spend it restoring the music program in the schools. I would rather spend the money hiring new people, because I think we all know that the biggest problem the city has is the lack of good jobs. And these are good-paying jobs with good benefits. And if we're going to spend $400,000 a year, we could hire some more people and make some families in a lot better shape. So those are just a couple of things that I think are more important than adding to the payroll of $400,000 a year. The other thing that I think is, while there are some concessions in the contract, I don't think there are enough. I'm particularly concerned about the amount of time off in this contract. This is, people get 13 holidays, three personal days, 30 sick days. I think 30 sick days a year is just asking for trouble. Plus, at six years, people get 19 vacation days. So I think we have better ways that we should spend our money, and I think the mayor should have driven a higher bargain. Thank you.
Councilwoman Lee?
I am going to also vote no on this contract. I have a hard time voting for a contract that is giving over 3% raises for three years in a row, when inflation last year was around 2%. It gives these raises across the board without any consideration of performance or merit. So I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
Council Vice President Farina?
Through the chair, would it be possible to ask Arthur Jordan if the days off in the contract and the salaries are in par with other cities our size in the state? If you could comment on that?
Okay, after the discussion, I'll ask Mr. Jordan to come forward. Councilman San Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Some went on the council last term, but the mayor proposed raises for his administration. And they made a lot more than these guys are making. Councilman Stychos, you voted for the raises. Yes, you did. You voted for the raises. I was the only person who voted against the raises. Check it. So, you pulled it from the Bible about the least among us. These guys don't make a lot of money, they pay 20% co-pay, and they work their butts off. So I'm voting yes, I'm proudly voting yes on this. I just think you need to be consistent on the way you think when you're handing out raises. These guys are not getting a lot in raises. Thank you.
Councilman Box?
Thank you, Council President. Just to echo what Councilman San Maria was just saying, I'm not sure what the average salary is of a Teamster there. I'm assuming it's around $35,000 a year. And if you do a 3% raise on that, that amounts to $1,000. We're not talking a lot of money here. And for a bargaining unit that gave, and gave, and gave in concessions over the past three years, when the city was in a definite financial bind with the General Assembly cutting state aid to the cities and towns, you know, that was money that was founded. So that was needed. So, you know, to say, again, everything needs to be put into context. 3% might sound like a lot of money, but it really isn't when you're talking about what they make on an annual basis. So I will be voting in favor of this contract. Thank you.
Councilman Stychos?
Yeah, I'd just like to correct Councilman San Maria. You and I were the two people who voted against the raises for the top administrators.
You approved, you seconded my motion for the amendment, but then you voted against it.
No, I voted for it. I think you need to check that.
Okay, cool, we'll check it.
All right.
Councilman Pavecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, I'd like to ask Director Strom a question. Mr. Strom?
Yes, Councilman.
Director, you mentioned the defined contribution plan that this was going to create. How much of the savings do you see in...
Well, obviously, it's for new employees. We did the same thing with the Teamster contract three years ago. We now have 12 people in the Teamsters that are participating in this 401A plan. It's similar to a 401K individual plan, but it's called a 401A plan. The, in the laborers, it would be the same thing. Right now, they participate in the MERS system with the state. We have to contribute as an employer 10.66%. With the 401A plan, we'll be contributing at 3%. With the state system, that percentage can change from year to year. With the 401A plan, it's locked in for the next three years at 3%. It may stay at that, it'll be a negotiated item, but that's over 7% savings for the city. And obviously, it doesn't affect this administration as much as it will affect future administrations, because the more people you have participating, the more people coming in, say, after retirements, that's when the city will benefit.
So it's fair to say that this is a future savings, more of a future savings, and that's why there are some concessions on the wage scale and increases?
That is correct. That was part of it, and also the fact that they increased their cost share for the, one section of the group, older section of the group, from 12 to 15%. The rest stayed at 20. And we also changed the design plan. And based, Councilman Stychos mentioned that it was $400,000 per year. According to my fiscal note, it's $400,000 over a three-year period. So it's not, you know, it's not as rich as $400,000 per year.
Okay. Thank you. Just one other comment, Council President, if I may.
Yes, please.
While I understand Councilman Stychos' argument that, you know, it doesn't look like private industry, and I'm sure that anyone on the council that's in private industry doesn't get these kind of benefits, some of these benefits, but the salary scales are low, it seems. So, all things considered, now that we've gone to a defined contribution plan, I think what we're doing is helping the future administrations, helping our children and grandchildren, so that they don't see the same unfunded liability that we'll have, that we have and we're facing today. So I'm going to support this.
Councilman Seale?
Yes, through the chair. Director Strom, since the last contract, how much would you say that the laborers have given back in concessions over the last four years?
I believe it was about $400,000, $500,000. Does that sound right, Arthur? $570,000.
So really, if you take that number over the last four years, I know that we're protecting the future of the city by the defined benefits program, but if you look at that, that's $2-point-something million dollars that when the city was in need, these gentlemen, who aren't the most highest-paid employees, came to the city and gave something back to their credit. So I'm going to vote for this. I think that we have a plan in place for the future. I want to thank them.
Okay, good. So I agree with that, I just think it's important that we at least are talking about the same numbers. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Jordan, would you like to say a few words before we continue?
To address some of your concerns, I represent seven different municipalities. In doing my due diligence, and Mr. Cordy will attest to this, I did a market evaluation of the state. This is the third largest state. Mr. Stycho, you would not want to pay the workers in Newark. They could be cross after retirement. They average $7 an hour more than you pay your current employees here in Cranston. You only seize benefits after retirement. You're facing a longevity. All the benefits in this contract are not lucrative when you start to do analysis of the rest of the municipalities across the state. Whether they represent accident, a driver down here makes $2 an hour more than a driver in the third largest city. I think you're getting a pretty good deal for the dollar. And the reason that these employees have been dedicated to the city is because most of them live there. It is a good job, but $20, the raise was $22. It's not going to take a family that far. It's going to help, but it's not going to save the day. Thank God they live in this city, they might just be able to have enough gas to get to work that week, the raise. That's about where it's going to get you. $20 in gas don't go far.
Anybody else? Well, my comments are going to be this. I've served under four mayors. Every time the city had a crisis, the first unit to step up was the laborers. They're not the highest paid, and I've seen comparisons between them and school custodians. And I question that because it wasn't apples-to-apples at the time. Mr. Jordan just enlightened us as far as what work laborers make compared to what Cranston laborers make. And he's absolutely right. We have a good deal. I will vote for this, and I want to publicly thank the laborers for their efforts. They're there day and night, rain, snow, whatever the case is, and when they have a problem, they always came to the table to help out. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee?
No.
Councilwoman Stychos?
No.
Councilman Box?
Yes.
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 Councilman Stychos?
Next is a resolution authorizing the real estate tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved, second. Motion made in second. I don't know if you want the discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Let me know.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. If I could just make one comment, that we're going electronic here, and I think there should probably be a connection to the tax abatements and the interest waivers, because if one of the members of the council wanted to know what they were, I mean, tonight we have them, but...
No blink.
We won't be doing that. Some information on those is not public, so it's generally a secret.
Okay, thank you. The next is a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion to approve, second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Lee? Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Next is the tax interest waivers recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved, second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. The next ordinance, it has to do with the police pension fund. This is the well-publicized modification of the cost of living allowances. This was approved in committee unanimously. Motion moved passage, motion approved, motion made in second. Any discussion?
Hearing none, Councilman Akado?
Thank you, Council President. I think I just want to reiterate what I said in the committee. This is not an easy vote for me. I think the issue is the unfunded pension liability that needs to be addressed. If this passes, it will definitely help fund 100%. I want to thank the retired police organization and Mr. Gallagher for coming to the table and binding out a agreement between the administration and his organization. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Stychos?
Just a brief comment. I think if you look at the, in the, I believe it's in the city's financial statement, you've seen the history of how this pension has been funded and the fireman's pension has been funded. And back in the Trafficanti administration, when to hit the required, the recommended amount was a $13 million problem, but at that point, we were only giving about $6 million and $5 million. So that's really where the ball was dropped. The O'Leary administration did not properly fund the pensions, but the Laffey, the Polatano, and fund administrations have made a much better effort to fund these pensions. But the hole that was dug back in the '90s, under the Trafficanti majority, really set us on the path that we are unfortunately at today.
Councilman Akado?
Thank you, Council President. Just thinking of a few things to, I don't think you can blame what administration, I think it was done over the past 40 years or so, and it just was something that the city chose not to fund 100%. Also, the pay-as-you-go, I don't think was a good idea. But I know that the Trafficanti administration did put the working, people that were working for the city to choose that they could go in the state pension system. So I think that was one credit for me, Trafficanti, that he got a number of individuals out of the city pension and into the state pension.
Councilman Seale?
Oh yes, a point of information, if we look at the budgets over the last 30 years on the funding line, I believe it was Mano Polatano during his term, that both budgets that he proposed funded the pensions at 100%. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Councilman Pavecchio? Thank you, Council President. Just as we discussed in the committee meeting, you know, this is not something that we chose to do. We were left with this problem after 40, 50 years of not funding these pensions correctly. And frankly, I think that if they had been funded 100%, there probably would have been more frequent tax increases over the last 50 years, because there was simply not enough money to fund them at 100%. They're unsustainable, unfortunately. At $312 million unfunded liability, it's more than our annual budget for this year, more than the revenues for one whole year. So we have to do something. And I think that, I'm impressed with what's going on as far as attempting to negotiate something on this. I don't think we're asking too much of some of the retirees. I think that Council President brought forward the... And I think that this is something that we have to do, and I'm going to support it.
Anybody else on discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Next is three thirteen oh five. This is the companion resolution to do with the Fireman's Pension Fund. Move passage.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Next is three thirteen oh five. This is the companion resolution to do with the Fireman's Pension Fund. Move passage.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Next is a resolution, ordinance three thirteen oh seven. This is a housekeeping matter to remove a, from the code of the city, the tax incentive that was given to the now-defunct Catherine Gibbs.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. The last item is a resolution, this passed unanimously, authorizing, yeah, passed in committee unanimously, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Rhode Island Department of Transportation for reimbursement for police details. Perhaps the administration would like to, I'm sorry, move passage.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
Councilman Señor. Yes, I can wait till the administration speaks, Council President, if you want to do that. I just have one quick question.
Okay, Mr. Kirshenbaum.
Pursuant to the regulations of the Rhode Island EOT, we have to have an agreement with them which, to reimburse us for our police detail for the roadwork, or else we can't get paid. So this is simply something on the books, a mechanism to authorize them to pay us and to enter into this agreement.
Councilman Señor.
Thank you, Council President. To the administration or the sponsor, if Fletcher Avenue was the state where we've, I know we've gone over that fifteen times, if we have to put the police detail there because of floods, will this reimburse us? I wasn't at the committee, maybe some...
I'll defer to the administration on that. I assume that that would be covered, but...
It's not detailed there, every time the street floods. So this would be a great thing if that was one of the streets.
I was not thinking of that particular instance when I read this contract. I thought more of maintenance or road projects, but I'll look at it and get back to you on that.
Okay. If it's not in there, would we lose out, or could we make an amendment to it?
Well, this is a standard type of agreement that they have with all the municipalities, just to be reimbursed for road projects. I don't think it's for emergency...
Well, when it's flooded, that's a project, so...
No, I agree with that. Let me look at it.
Okay, so I'm safe in voting for this? I just don't want to... Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Señor, it sounds like you'd get half the apple anyways.
Yeah, half the apple's better than being hungry.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Public Works Committee, Councilman Sido.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance three thirteen dash two. This matter was brought up in front of the Public Works Committee, and it was voted unanimously for approval.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Ordinance three dash thirteen dash three. Mr. President, this also, this matter also came in front of the Public Works Committee. It seems to be a positive recommendation.
Motion approved. Motion's been made, seconded and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Safety Services License Committee, Councilman Señor Maria.
Thank you, Council President. We have Safety Services Committee met on a Class B eviction license note. Again, this is above the cap, that's why it's before this council. It was approved unanimously. Red Lounge Restaurant LLC, committee has met and recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Motion made in second. Under discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Claims Committee, Councilwoman Lee.
The Claims Committee has met and recommends the passage of the following on the docket. Four mailboxes and two damaged vehicles totaling five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents, and I move to pass them as a block.
Motion to make to prove in a block.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussions?
I have to recuse, there's someone on there that I'd be accused in committee, so I have to pull out my motion.
Entertained somebody else making a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second. Under discussion?
Through the chair.
Yes, Council Vice President.
I was under the assumption this was going to be going forward notification of settled claims, and we were just going to notify them out, and they didn't require a vote?
Required ratification.
The docket should have read Report of Settled Claims versus the approval. That was the discussion we had. That was an oversight.
Oversight, so there's no vote on this. No vote.
Okay. Mr. Council President, so we're not voting to ratify those actions and payments that are not wanted, paid, and that's it, just made part of the record?
Do we need to...
I'll check with our solicitor. According to Mr. Quinlan, it just comes in his report, it does not have to be ratified.
Thank you.
Okay, public hearings. Anybody would like to speak on any undocumented item? Or undocumented item? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
President Cranston firefighters, I just want to clear something up on the ordinance that you did tonight. Councilman Stekos, it had nothing to do with Mayor Trafficanti. And not that Mayor Trafficanti needs both of us to speak for him, but he's not here tonight. Our pension was in trouble long before he became mayor. That's why in nineteen seventy-six, the police and fire unions took the city to court to fund our pensions. The pensions were never funded since their inception, so Mayor Trafficanti had nothing to do with it. As a matter of fact, when he came into office in eighty-four, he started the boardroom to put new firefighters into the mayor's system, the state pension system. Imagine the problem we have today if he didn't do that, if he didn't have the foresight to put the guys into the state pension system. And then what we did is we went backwards. We put active firefighters from ninety to ninety-five. They had the choice to go into the mayor's system. So just to get Mayor Traffic didn't do that at the time, we'd be looking at probably a doubled unfunded liability right now. And also, one of the reasons you spoke about, you must have looked back and see how he funded the ARC at that time, you also had to remember, when he put firefighters into the state pension system that were already part of the system, he had to pay the state, he had to pay the murs that money to accept those veteran firefighters into the mayor's system. So that's the reason he didn't fund the ARC the way it should have been funded, because he had to pay for those firefighters that he placed into the, into the mayor's system. So there's plenty to go around, but it shouldn't be at the feet of Mayor Trafficanti. Thank you.
Anybody else from the department to speak in any item?
Well, actually, twenty seventh Farm Street, I just want to thank you for the whole snow removal thing. I've lived in Cranston ten years, at least eight of those years. I've been trying to do something about that, and I've always got the no way, no how, so I am so thankful that you finally have stepped up to the plate. Whoever was behind it, thank you. And now, actually, to see it actually happen, now just voted on, will be a wonderful thing for those of us that walk the streets, for the children that walk to school. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak in any documented or undocumented item? Hearing nobody, seeing nobody, I close that part of this meeting. Election of city officials, there's no election of any city officials on the docket this evening. A report of city offices, are there any reports?
I have none.
Executive Communications.
Thank you, Council President. Cranston Fire Department Captain Michael J. Simone was requested to be placed on pension. Captain Simone has met all the necessary requirements, and we urge your approval.
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Secondly, Cranston firefighter Peter Fornier, if I pronounced that correctly.
Fornier.
Okay, Fornier. He's requested to be continued in service for one year. Fornier has met all the necessary requirements, we urge your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Counsel President, Communications, that's me. What we did tonight, by passing those two ordinances concerning the police and the fire retirement, has gone a long way, and will go a long way, to straighten out the financial situation in this city. We cannot carry a three hundred million dollar plus unfunded liability, because that's going to have to be paid by the taxpayers. And the settlement was fair. I know there's some firefighters and there's some police who do not agree, but when you average it out, they're getting a one and a half percent hold per year for the next approximately twelve years. That's more than anybody on Social Security is guaranteed. And the simple fact of the matter is, when you take everybody, that's widows, retirees, ex-wives, put them all together, it's a fifty thousand dollar a year pension. If you just take the retirees, and take out the widows and the ex-wives and all the others, it's closer to sixty thousand dollars a year. So nobody should be complaining. What we did was fair, and I'm glad that this council passed that unanimously. Thank you. Under, Council Communications, anyone? Councilman Señor Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I have to, Fletcher Avenue, as you know, we're trying to get that wall put up, and we need all the owners to sign off the DEM permit, so I just wanted to get an update from the administration on that, please.
Yes, Councilmen, as we discussed earlier, there's a couple of snags that Natural Resources has run into in regards to some of the properties over there, and they're going through what they call a regulatory review now, to see if they can get a little more latitude from the grant money. So right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern as far as getting any more commitments.
Can we leave that on the agenda for next month, Council President?
Yes, clerk, please put it on the agenda for next month.
Also, the bus stop at the bottom of Lockspitch Street, Councilman Niceville Library is causing obstruction, and I know you have sent Marissa down to drive it and check on it, so can you give me an update on that?
Yes, sir. We first reached out to Ripta, and they passed our inquiry on to their advertising company, who puts the advertising up in the bus stops. They sent us back photos saying that there is no visual problem with coming up to that intersection and seeing oncoming traffic. But just the way the photograph appeared to me, we decided we would send Marissa out for closer look. And she agrees with you that when you stop at the stop sign like you're supposed to, it is a hindrance in order to see oncoming traffic. You're forced to move ahead, as you had described to us. So what we've asked the traffic engineer to do is to go down there and evaluate the intersection. If he comes to the same conclusion that you and I have, then he will put together a letter right back to Ripta, because we're not going to be dealing with their advertising company, we're going to do with Ripta, and explain to them what we feel needs to be done.
Do you need to put this on next month's agenda, Council President? I'll just go follow up with the administration, if that's okay?
Fine. Thank you. Councilman Akado?
You're on the docket, sir.
You're on the docket, that's why I called.
That was, that has been addressed. I believe that's private property, I don't think there's anything, unless you have something...
There was a couple of things we looked at, just so that you know. One is that the cemetery does not have the money to put any kind of a locking gate on there right now, because they just spent most of their assets rebuilding the bridge. And secondly, we also found out through the Historical Cemetery Society, I believe it is, the ones that oversee historical cemeteries, that you cannot keep anyone from accessing the cemetery. And it goes way back into historical times, but basically...
Historical cemeteries could access.
Right. You cannot ban access to them.
Councilman Botts?
Thank you, Council President. I just have a couple items. I just want to congratulate the Cranston Chamber of Commerce for organizing a cleanup of Ralph Square and another grassy area along, I guess, the corner of Pontiac and Ralph Street. I was unable to attend on Sunday only because I had numerous commitments, including my son's confirmation, but they did an excellent job, and they should be commended for the work they did. And Ralph Square looks absolutely beautiful right now, and the amount of garbage bags that were there waiting to be picked up is a testament to the hard work they did, so I'd like to congratulate them for that.
That's all I have, thank you, sorry. Councilman Pavecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, Maria, did you take my letter, you didn't put my letter into the docket, I assume my communication...
I left it on my desk. Did you want to read it? I had emailed you on that.
Yeah, I can summarize it. I didn't bring it with me.
I can run down and get it. I had part of that. Do you want me to get it?
I can summarize. Do you want to say? I guess you could...
I'll forward it to the council tomorrow.
That's fine, I can just summarize what it was about. It was concerning the fines and penalties from the municipal court on minimum housing violations, and some of you weren't here when this went down, the last year and a half, I guess, and maybe it could be a guide to how to deal with the administration on some of these issues. But I had gotten into this issue with minimum housing because of my constituents' complaints, and I met with the director of minimum housing, the mayor's office, the solicitor, and we looked to address the issue of boarded up houses, foreclosed houses, neglected homes, et cetera. And as a result of all the, a couple of meetings, I sponsored and we passed a resolution...
And as a result of all the, a couple of meetings, I sponsored and we passed a resolution a year or two ago urging the municipal court to impose the fines which we found are, do exist in our ordinances. In fact, for each violation, there's a $50 a day fine. So I then had some discussions with the chief judge of the municipal court, and he agreed that he would, you know, be more attentive to those complaints as the prosecution of those came before the court through the solicitor's office. And the result of it now, we've seen, there was one fine of $50,000 that was paid to the city just recently, and more recently, I had instigated something with regard to property on Capuano Drive in Garden City, which has been boarded up for a while and it still is, but it was foreclosed on, and there's now, that was brought to court and there's a fine running at $200 per day, and that fine is over $50,000 already and will be closer to $80,000 if it gets to August, which will be the one-year anniversary. So, you know, while money was not the big issue, it was the issue of trying to force some compliance, but I just wanted to report that the court is enforcing those fines and penalties, they are very severe, and it does work. Hopefully, the banks and other people will get the message at some point when they start having to hand over those rather large checks. So I just wanted to report that. Counselor Mabatz?
Thank you, council president. I remember the other item, through the chair to administration, I just have a question regarding problems with water and the paving. Well, not, I know the city's going to be doing Legion Way, but the other areas, have you heard from them if they're going to start work on the culverts, where they did the work last fall? I think what they did is they temp patched it.
In which yard?
When they're supposed to come back in the spring, and have you heard any word from them on that?
Thank you, councilman Mabatz. Yes, as a matter of fact, I spoke with Nick Capessa, our engineer, and he's meeting with them this week to go over the plans for those areas, and as you know, he has to sign off on any of the work that's done, and I can assure you that any work that's done in these areas is going to meet the highest standards that we can hold them to, so we are on top of it, and we certainly think that you'll see the fruit of the work that they do. Thank you.
Counselor McSiney?
I was just wondering, this is for the administration, I suppose, now that we're asking about projects, I was wondering where, if, what the progress was on that bridge, the Amtrak bridge, and what we could expect with that bridge going over Park Avenue there, going over the train tracks on Park Avenue.
Thank you, council president. Counselor, just as a quick briefing, that bridge is actually state property, so we're waiting to hear final plans of what the state plans to do, but it is on their agenda to get that bridge, or at least the paving of that bridge completed this year. And by this year, I mean by, hopefully during paving season.
Okay, just through, president, I was just wondering if there, when you say just the paving, is that going to include the sidewalks, just because pedestrian traffic there is impeded?
I believe that they are and have in the past looked at that. One of the complications is that there's a, I believe it's a gasoline or some sort of tube.
Okay.
That has utilities going through it, and that's what hinders it on one side, and on the other side, it's just a matter of them making a decision of what they're going to do. However, what I can do for you, ma'am, is make sure that when Ken Mason, the director, meets with them, we bring that question to them and try to get a response for you.
That would be great, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody else from the council like to speak on any subject? Hearing none, I close this portion of the meeting. Old business, is there any old business?
There's none.
Is there any new business?
Yes, there is.
Counselor Nakado?
Thank you, council president. I just went through a new business and saw a ordinance there that supposedly I am going to introduce, but I never, it was something I introduced last year, but I hadn't decided to introduce it this year until I spoke with you, but I see it for new business now, and I'm just wondering how it could be, because I never made a call to get it on the docket, so I just, for the future, I just want to correct these things so it don't happen again.
What ordinance are you referring to?
Tax review board compensation, I did introduce that last year, it didn't make it through committee, and I was going to talk to you about that because, A, I think we need to fund it in the budget, and B, you know, I need your input, because if we're not on board, you know, I don't think it's, you know, I was going to talk to the finance chair too, so until we make the necessary connections, I don't know, unless you want to introduce it, it's your call, council president.
Well, it's your ordinance, if you want to rescind it, at this point, we can't.
I'm going to hold it until I get a consensus.
All right, then it's on the, it's on the new business then.
No, no, it's, I'm not introducing it, I'm not introducing.
That's why I just asked if you were going to rescind it.
What?
Yeah, I'm just going to take it off the docket, that's what rescind means. Okay.
I never, I never put it in.
Please take that off the new business portion of the docket and continue. These are all business.
We have proposed ordinance four dash thirteen dash oh one, an amendment of Title V of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled Business Licenses and Regulations for Fireworks Vendor License, to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on May 6. We have proposed ordinance four dash thirteen dash oh two, an amendment of Title V of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled Help and Safety for Waste Haulers' Hours of Operation, to be referred to the Public Works Committee for hearing on May 6. We have proposed ordinance four dash thirteen dash oh three, an amendment of Title V of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled Help and Safety for Emergency Management Commission, to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on May 16. We have proposed ordinance four dash thirteen dash oh four, this is an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston, a change of zone for 166 Cannon Street. This was a petition filed by the property owner, Nancy McGovern, to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on May 16. We have the following new claims. We have a claim from Jason Baudro from an alleged incident on June 24, 2011. We have a property damage claim from Leonard Uppen from an alleged incident on March 18, 2013. We have a personal injury claim from Melissa Davila from an alleged incident on December 19, 2012. We have a property damage claim from Mark Lucel from an alleged incident on February 17, 2013. We have an alleged claim from Robert Smith from Ledge Falls West on February 24, 2013. We have a property damage claim from Richard Parquette from an alleged incident on March 19, 2013. We have a property damage claim of Rosemarie Stanle from an alleged incident on March 23, 2013. Those are to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on May 6. We also have one ordinance which is an item received late which will require suspension of Rule 34B. It's proposed ordinance four dash thirteen dash oh five, an amendment of Title V of the Code of the City of Cranston titled Rodent Control for Bird Feeders, Fines, and Nuisance. This would be referred to the Public Works Committee for hearing on May 6, 2013. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there any objections to the additional item that bird feeders? Hearing none, that go onto committee? Is there a motion to refer all the matters to the Cranston City? Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on. Now, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk, to the solicitor, do you have any update on the status of the sewer ordinance?
I have a conference call tomorrow morning, and I should be able to get more information at the public works session.
Very good. Is there any discussion concerning this? Hearing none, move on. Before we adjourn, I want to remind everybody that the May council meeting will be on Tuesday, not Monday, May 28th, due to the Memorial Day holiday. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
[inaudible]